Meeting come to order, please. Thank you. If you would, commission members press your present button, please. It's not working, girl. Record and roll. Thank you. Staff announcements?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We only have a couple of announcements. Announcement one would be the Grassland Small Area Study. We have tentatively scheduled the next public outreach meeting for early June. We're still working through some of the logistics, and once those are worked through, we will notify you. Chances are, it will occur before next month's meeting. That's the reason why I wanted to at least make that announcement. One item regarding the agenda. Please be aware that all the bonds will be consent save item nine, which is Ivan Creek Performance Bond for Landscaping off Patensville Road. Other than that, Mr. Chairman, I have no other announcements.
Thank you, sir. A consideration of the minutes of April 11th. Any corrections or changes? Motion made and seconded. Any other discussion? Prepare to vote. Hit the confirm button, Brian. Thank you. Record a vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Old business? Any old business in this, Joe? None?
No, sir.
Consideration of the consent agenda. Any commissioner wishing to pull an item for separate discussion, please say so now, otherwise we'll take it as a whole. Fourteen and fifteen, please. Fourteen and fifteen. We'll take it, the conclusion of the consent. Anyone else? I see none, staff.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'll begin with item three, Arrington Retreats, Section One, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $225,000. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in the amount of $185,000 for a period of one year. Item four, Bell Pond, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $45,000. Recommendation: Extend the current amount for a period of six months. Item five, Rins Valley Addition, Section Two, Performance Bond for Landscaping, $4,800. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in the amount of $1,500 for a period of six months. Item six, Chardonnay, Section Two, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $220,000. Recommendation: Extend the current amount for a period of six months to allow time for the proper reports to be presented to Williamson County Highway Commission for review. Item seven, Curry Ingram Academy, Performance Bond for Wastewater System, $90,000. Recommendation: Extend the current amount for a period of one year. Item eight, Grace Chapel Academy, Performance Bond for Landscaping, $23,000. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance amount of $10,200 for a period of six months. Item ten, Ivan Creek, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $375,000. Recommendation: Extend the current amount for a period of six months. Item eleven, Ivan Creek, Performance Bond for Off-Site Road Improvements, $83,000. Recommendation: Extend the current amount for a period of six months. Item twelve, Olandale, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $110,000. Recommendation: Extend the current amount for a period of six months. Item thirteen, Stags Leap, Section Two A, Performance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control, $206,000. Recommendation: Convert to maintenance in the amount of $150,000 for a period of one
Thank you, sir. Any questions on the consent? Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record a vote. Motion carries. Thank you. First was not on consent was agenda item nine, which is Ivan Creek Performance Bond for Landscaping located off Patensville Road. Staff?
Staff visited site and noted no improvements have been made. Since there's been no contact with applicant, staff request that the applicant be present at the planning commission meeting to discuss why the landscaping improvements have not been completed. Mr. Chairman, it should be noted that since this writing, staff has met on a couple of occasions with the applicant, and they have indicated that they are in the process of getting bids for this landscaping to be placed. Staff was concerned because we felt like, due to the dates of when this bond was implemented, that the landscaping should be placed as soon as possible. And so they have indicated that they are in the process of doing that. The applicant is here tonight and would be happy to answer any questions that commission has.
Who is... What's his name? Who?
Tim Unger.
Are you here?
I'm going to blank for a minute.
While he's coming up, William, what is the staff's recommendation?
Staff would recommend three months if they're satisfied with his explanations or...
Current amount?
Yes.
Thank you. Sir, you have the floor.
I guess I should start with, we didn't know there was any time constraint or expectation on what needed to be done, so we had already... Excuse me, we'd already been planning to do the work. In fact, we had been reaching out to the planning folks to say it's time to get started. So, to us, we didn't know there's any particular timeline on it, and we're prepared to do it and ready and have the bids, and we'll be done shortly.
You understand, three months?
Yeah, I think that's more than fine, yeah.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Yeah, sure.
Should say, a review in three months. I don't believe this bond is at an expiration date yet.
To install the landscaping I'm talking about.
Yes, yes. And three months to install the landscaping.
Is that clear to the applicant?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
No, sir.
Your recommendation again?
Three months to install the landscaping.
Thank you. Any questions? Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? Mr. Walton?
On item fourteen, it talks about... Well, okay, never mind. We extended it for six months, six months ago. Okay, all right.
All right. You good?
I will, ma'am.
Ready to vote? Prepare to vote? Do it again, Paul. Hit it harder. Thank you, sir. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item fourteen, Stockit Creek, Section One, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control. Staff?
Staff visited site and noted that no initial improvements have been made. Staff recommends that this bond be extended in the current amount for a period of six months. Staff also notes that the asphalt binder is in poor condition and recommends that the developer be allowed to make the necessary repairs and place the asphalt surface mix. It should be noted that the streets within this development are private and will not be maintained by Williamson County. The build-out for this section is at 50 percent.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Crowell, you got a comment?
It's on the same comment for both fourteen and fifteen, that because of the asphalt binder, I would ask, could they... We have a report back in three months rather than wait to six months to make sure that the asphalt binder is in place.
That would be acceptable to staff, yes.
Any other discussion? Mr. Crowell, would you make that in the form of a motion for your three months?
Yes, sir. I recommend accepting staff's recommendation with a three-month report back to the commission.
Thank you, sir. Ethan? Any further discussion? Do you have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Thank you, Tommy. Motion seconded. Any further discussion? I hear none. Prepare to vote. Well, do it, Brian. You need to confirm. I think you need to confirm.
Well, anyway, I'm in favor of it.
Electronics got us again. Thank you. Wow. Green and blue. Thank you. Record a vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item fifteen, Stockit Creek, Section Two, Maintenance Bond for Roads, Drainage and Erosion Control. Staff?
Staff visited site and noted no initial improvements have been made. Staff recommends that this bond be extended in the current amount for a period of six months. Staff also notes that the asphalt binder is in poor condition, recommends that the developer be allowed to make the necessary repairs and place the asphalt surface mix. Should be noted, these streets are private and will not be maintained by Williamson County. The build-out for this section is at 26 percent. Mr. Chairman and staff would have no problem with a review in three months.
I should make a motion except staff's recommendation with a three-month report back to the commission.
Thank you, sir. Second? Thank you, ma'am. Prepare to vote. Vote now. See if it'll work this time, guys. Oh, we're good. Record a vote. Motion carries. Thank you. That concludes the consent agenda. Agenda item sixteen, Public Hearing, Amendments... Amendment to the Williamson County's zoning ordinance regarding craft distilleries. For those of you in the audience, our procedures are as follows for a public hearing. At conclusion of the staff report, you'll be invited to come to the podium and give us your comments. If you would, at that time, give us your name and address. We would appreciate it. Agenda item sixteen, staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In early 2012, staff was approached by a potential applicant regarding the construction of a small-scale craft distillery on a roughly 27-acre parcel in the Rural Preservation Five Zoning District. After reviewing the county zoning ordinance, which was adopted in May 2012, staff concluded that distilleries, regardless of their size, are only allowed under the broader heading of heavy industrial uses, which are only permitted in the 840 Center District. Staff was asked to prepare an amendment to the zoning ordinance that would allow small-scale craft distilleries in the RP Five Zoning District. As you will likely recall, several years ago, staff presented for this body's consideration an amendment to the previous zoning ordinance that would have allowed distilleries in several zoning districts. That amendment was viewed unfavorably by this commission due to concerns about potential impacts on surrounding properties. It is important to note that this proposed amendment is vastly different than its predecessor, particularly as it relates to the scale of the distilleries that could be permitted. The previous amendment did not place a cap on the amount of spirits that could be produced. In contrast, this amendment would limit production to 25,000 gallons per year and would limit storage of produced spirits to 5,000 barrels. As a point of reference, larger, high-volume distillers produce as much as 65,000 gallons per day and store hundreds of thousands of barrels. The attached amendment would allow craft distilleries as a special use in the Rural Preservation Five Zoning District. As a special use, a public hearing would be required in conjunction with the Board of Zoning Appeals, consideration of special use approval for any specific craft distillery proposal. Among the specific criteria proposed in this amendment are standards addressing minimum lot size, the percentage of the site that must remain in open space, building setback limitations, limitations on operating hours, and basic design-related requirements. Staff believes that small craft distilleries are not likely to negatively impact surrounding properties, particularly with the criteria proposed in the amendment, which are designed to mitigate potential impacts on surrounding properties. As such, it is recommended that the attached resolution be forwarded to the county commission for consideration. And, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to point out to... Note to you that there is a revised exhibit in front of you labeled Attachment 16-1 Revised. The only change to that is that we cleared up a faulty reference to a section, but that's the only change.
Thank you, sir. All right, well, open for a public hearing at this time. Anyone in the audience who wants to make a comment on this particular agenda item, you're invited to do so now. If you would come to the mic, give us your name and address. As I said earlier, I would appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, I'm John Gibson. My address is 3371 South Hall Road. I'm the next-door neighbor to this proposed project. My wife and I live in a house that was built in 1876. It's known as Rivers Meet. We have totally restored it. It's a wonderful house, the wonderful grounds, and we have no objection whatsoever to having a small craft distillery located next door to us. We have spoken extensively to the young man who is proposing this project, and we have seen all of his concept drawings, and we are very happy with it and hope this commission will take it seriously and approve what this young man would like to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ralph Drury, and I live at 234 Miles Manor. About a year ago, maybe this month, I met Lee Kennedy and Mike Tanner, and they presented to me at that time the drawings and the concept of what they were wanting to do. Since that time, I've been around these guys numerous times, and I keep seeing further and further drawings and more of the structure that I feel will be an asset to Williamson County. You might say... Might ask me, "Well, why? You're not a neighbor, you're not this, you're not that, and you're not an authority on distilleries." Well, probably not, but I worked my way through college working in a distillery. And even though that was some 50 years ago, I look at those distilleries now, which I still have kinfolk working at, and I see what they've done to improve some of the things that people sometimes are concerned about with a distillery, whether it's the big smoke stacks or whatever. That doesn't exist today, and it doesn't exist in this plan as I see it, that this is going to be anything that will have any impact whatsoever in a negative form on the community or on the area. So I highly encourage you to look into approving this. And another thing, I look at the dream that people have, and this one from Mr. Kennedy is an exceptional one, and I think it will be such an asset to Williamson County. We'll someday thank him for doing this if you approve it. Thank you so much for the time.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mary Pierce, and I live at 410 Watercrest Drive in Franklin. And I do work for the Heritage Foundation, but we did not put this on the agenda because we've been dealing with the old, old jails so much and been busy, so I'm speaking for myself. But I have a great interest in preserving our community character, and I really think that the planning staff has done a good job with requiring that 90 percent of the site be open space and that the... I think the size, the structure can be is about 12,500 square feet, so I do not believe it is of a scale that it would be a negative impact to the historic areas of Franklin that we have worked in Williamson County so hard to preserve. There are two things that I would like for y'all to consider adding to the document as it goes through, and it could be a later amendment. But one is that the historic resources on the site would have to be protected. With this proposed project, they would intend to save the rock wall. There isn't a historic structure on it, but I think we're not doing this just for this project. We're doing it as a county ordinance. So I would ask that the protection of historic resources, since we have a chance to add that, be added, and that there be a design review by the planning staff to make sure that the structures are in keeping with the historic character of the area, which might vary from location to location. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Lee Kennedy, and I live at 2405 Old Charlotte Pike. And I am actually the applicant that prompted us to be here tonight. And I want to... I'm here to show my support for the text amendment. I want to thank Mr. Madison and the staff. I think they spent a lot of time and thought on preparing an amendment that protects the county and ensures that the rural character of the outlying areas of the county is maintained. I had my first meeting with Mr. Madison and Mr. Horn in January of 2012, and when I first went in to meet with them, it had been about two years since the failed attempt at the text amendment in 2009. And so the majority of that conversation was talking about the details of that project and maybe the shortcomings of it, what the concerns were by the county, or the concerns the county had of letting craft distilleries operate within the county. And so we spent a year, almost a year and a half, meeting with industry experts and consultants. Among those were well-known master distillers, well-known scientists within the distilling community. We also spent a lot of time visiting craft distillery sites throughout Tennessee, throughout Kentucky, went as far as Texas, and even went to Scotland. And so the amendment that's here before you tonight is the result of that year and a half worth of due diligence. I wanted to kind of look at the text amendment itself, and just to let you know, craft distilleries are generally characterized as producing less than 50,000 gallons per year. The staff has... And when we talked with the staff, and we've almost... We've halved that to 25,000 gallons of production per year. So to kind of put that in... With craft, there's an emphasis on quality versus quantity in low-impact, low-volume. And so when you compare that to some of the... Another large distillery in our state who makes close to 68,000 gallons per day, that would... It would almost take a craft distillery making 25,000 per year almost two and a half years to make what that distillery would make in one day. Also, we look at Arrington Vineyards, which was approved by the commission by a text amendment. They produce roughly 40,000 gallons of wine a year. So we will fall... The craft distillery would fall almost half of that. Also, we looked at things that... It's hard to compare whiskey and milk, but we look at Hatcher Dairy, which was also created by a text amendment, and they're roughly producing 125,000 gallons of milk per year. And so we feel like those two entities that were created using the text amendment process have been a shining example of what best practices can be in Williamson County. And so that's our intent if the amendment is passed. I think that Williamson County among the Tennessee counties is a leader across the board. We're very proud of the standards which the staff has set for the text amendment. We feel that if the county is going to embrace the craft of distilling industry at all, we feel like this is a... Represents a good way to get in front of it and for the county to be able to control it and maintain that it... And make sure that it fits within the character of Williamson County. We also feel that the addition of craft distilleries to the county would add to a thriving heritage tourism industry that already exists within the county. You know, the county... We have great historical heritage in this county, and even though it's been lost, there was... Once upon a time, distilling was part of that heritage. But with the addition of boutiques, hotels being considered, the reclamation of the Battle of Franklin battlefield, the historic sites we hear, we feel like that craft distilling done at the level, small level, that this text amendment represents would add to that thriving heritage tourism, heritage tourism industry. Thank you again for your time to Mr. Madison and the staff, and I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody has.
However, as a... Having a son that's a fireman, I just want to encourage you to work with Williamson County Rescue Squad and with fire prevention in there, because you're going to be in a location that's not next door to a fire department.
Yes, sir.
I know there was a major fire in Kentucky at...
Right.
Jim Beam or something, and so I just want to put that out there.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
That you work with those powers to be with that in the background.
Absolutely. I can see that if this amendment gets that far and we get that far into the planning stages, that will be absolutely imperative that we follow those, the fire codes, whatever they may be, and meet with fire and rescue to make sure that everything is kosher, so to speak.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, I have no problem with having that sort of distillery in the county at all, but notice from his plan, he's not planning on doing weddings and reception things of this nature. Parking is not going to be available for that. But why are we restricting it to that one spot of the county? Like with Arrington, distillery is working in the other side of the county just as well. Why do we sort of lock it into one part of the county? Somebody else might want to come in and give some competition if it sees you successful.
That's a good question, Mr. Mosley. And we did consider opening that up to other zoning districts. Because of this particular request that prompted this investigation, we felt like initially we would just start with the RP Five Zoning District, but that's something that could be added to other zoning districts in the future.
You left a puzzle from here. Well, if we're going to have to add it later, we're going to have to come back and go through the same process again and make amendments down the line, do it. And we're getting to the point of almost doing things specific for one entity. We got two on the agenda tonight for one certain entity, and I think we need to look at things that are more broader perspective when we're doing them rather than doing them for one entity.
Let me do this. Let me close the public hearing. If that's the conclusion of it, we'll have that discussion after that, okay?
Okay, that's fine.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Steve Skelton wanted to speak, and I think he said he could maybe address some...
Public hearing is still open, but not for long.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I'm Steve Skelton. I live at 5390 Old Harding Road in Fernvale, and I'm actually currently Beechtree Distillery. And currently, we're actually set up in Nashville, Tennessee. And I'm actually, I guess, a quarter king, so my great-grandfather was Felix King of the old store down there in Fernvale. And so you guys that might know him and know some of his kinfolk, you might know why I kind of get into this business. If you go down at the old Fernvale Spring site, we got a lot of heritage, a lot of history. The Fernvale Spring Hotel, great place, you know. Got burned down in 1910, but as far as the zoning being in RP Five, talking with... I think when we started talking, I talked to Lee several times, and I talked to Rick Warwick of the Heritage Foundation, and he enlightened me on something, and it was something I didn't really realize. And it was that the first district in that side of the county, if you think about it back in the 18, 1900s, there wasn't a lot of open pasture and farmland over there. And it was kind of confined because it's little steeper hollows and valleys and stuff, and the fields down there are just about big enough for families only, not to produce to make any kind of money. So hence, he said, "Hey, most of the people, their children went into Nashville to work or into Franklin, or they farmed for somebody else. They cut wood because timber was a main product then in that area, or they made whiskey, transported whiskey." So that was kind of... So that was kind of the, one thing is that specific area, because if you go this side of Williamson County, it's rolling hills and a little more open, not as much cover. And these fellows are probably a little bit farmers, better bit farmers than we are over there. So, but I've actually been currently working on my distillery for, since 2011, and I'm still not all the way legal yet. I've got my DSP through the federal government. So if you think somebody's going to pop up and try to do this overnight, it's really hard. And that's one thing I wanted to share with you as well, because I actually put my application, to actually install your application to the TTB, you actually have to possess all of your equipment and your physical residence that you're going to place at before you ever apply. And then it took me about 11 months to get, to get through that application process. Now I'm working with ABC, and we'll be set up in Nashville for now, but I would love to come back to Fernvale one day. And that's, that's why I did it, to preserve the land and the history of my piece of property. So I really, you know, y'all saw the flood through there, the tornado through there. We've been tattooed, you know, and I can't raise anything in those fields to make me a living. So I would love to. I've been working in Williamson County for a long time, so I'd love to come back this way. So as far as being a specific project, I think there's, you know, you might find another couple of people that already have the heritage, but it's going to be really hard for some people to get into this. So thank you for your time.
We close the public hearing this time. Pete, the one, the first thing that came to my mind is, and that was part of it, I think part of the problem we had the last time this came about was it, it came back to the "not in my backyard" kind of thing. And I think that's my first question of staff, is where is all the places this can be put? And I need some detail, Mike, if you would, so that we have a good understanding of where we are. And the second question is on Mary Pierce's issue with respect to protection of historic and rock walls. Is that not covered somewhere else in the ordinance? Answer the second one first. Let's take that. Is that not already covered?
It is, yes.
So it doesn't need to be amended in this specific?
I believe that's correct.
That's what I was thinking. Mary, if you're still here?
Yeah.
You're too short, girl. I can't see you.
Happy you're attached.
Thank you, Mary. Now, to my first question with respect to areas these can be located, please, sir.
Okay. And I don't have a map to illustrate it.
Well, in general.
Yeah, the RP5 zoning district is applied in a large portion of the western side of Williamson County. The areas that had been zoned, but rural and estate, you may remember, are now zoned as RP5.
So I think minimum.
I'd say, yes, sir. And I would, I would estimate that approximately, at least 50% of the western side of the county, the unincorporated county, is zoned that way. So it's a pretty large, large area.
Pete, do you have any other comments? That was my first question, but trying to get to where you are. It's kind of like walking before you run. I'd like to walk on this a little bit before we take off running and go to any other areas that it might be viable. I think it is going to have to be out in some fairly large spacious areas by this ordinance. So it's not going to be on somewhere off the square in Franklin.
My thoughts are this, I don't have any objection to it at all, but I don't have to go, somebody else comes in and want to do the same thing in College Grove or Arrington or some other part of the country, that they got to go through a lot of extra loops just to get to the point of doing, to be allowed to try to do the same thing someone in the other part of the county is doing to this. As long as we have these physical restrictions on setbacks and acreage and preservation part, I have no problem with it, almost in any of the rural areas of the county.
Thank you, sir.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am?
I have a question for Mike. There's a small area in the RD zone, Bethesda's included in that, that does have a five-acre minimum. So would this apply? Is it just the five-acre minimum that we're thinking about, or is it just in the RP district?
This would apply just to the RP5 district right now as proposed tonight.
Don?
My question is, and a little problem I've got in my mind is putting industrial use in the RP, opening that up to industrial use. I would almost think that this could be classified under something other than industrial use for a small, a smaller setup like this, that wouldn't open that area up for industrial use.
Ms. Crowhead, I understand your point. We put it under industrial because that, I think that's the closest fit from a use category standpoint. However, this would not open it up to industrial uses, because this is, this would apply only to this very specific use of a craft distillery and only subject to the specific criteria. I don't think that we would look at other industrial uses the same way, or at least, at least most other industrial uses.
But wouldn't we, if someone came with a different type of use under the industrial use and asked the committee, doesn't that beg a question whether it can be used or can't be used at that point?
I don't believe it would.
Since none would be allowed now.
Right. I don't believe it would, because the only industrial use that is listed as a special use or a permitted use in that zoning district are craft distilleries. Other, other industrial uses are strictly prohibited in that zoning district.
Mr. Chairman, do we recommend approval for this? Or we recommend that it goes to the county commission for vote?
The latter.
The latter?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that. We move this to the county commission for vote for approval.
Most maiden seganted. I've got one more question before we vote, please. When I read this, Mike, about setbacks, all buildings used for processing located minimum 250 feet, does that become a front yard, side yard, backyard setback?
Yes, sir. That would apply to all property lines, including the front.
Okay. I want to make sure. Any other questions? Any other discussion? I wouldn't touch that with a fork, Pete. This is water, by the way. Oh, hearing no further discussion, prepare to vote, please. We have a motion. We're closing in. Court of vote, motion carries. Thank you. Continuing in public hearing mode, Agenda Item 17, Amendment to Williamson County Zoning Ordinance Regarding Specialty Education Facility Intellectually and Developmentally Disabled. Safer.
Chairman, development of this zoning ordinance amendment was a result of a series of conversations with Brightstone and local facilities serving the needs of the intellectually and developmentally disabled. As the zoning ordinance lacked a category that was specific, that specifically addressed the proposed use, it was concluded by staff that a new category should be created. The resulting amendments are a combination of the standards that were previously developed for educational facilities, retirement communities, and residential institutional facilities. These use categories contain elements of the facility that Brightstone seems to envision, yet individually they fail to capture the totality of this approach. These amendments would allow the development of such facility on a relatively large parcel with generous setback and green space requirements to ensure a rural campus setting. These criteria are seen as essential in an effort to integrate the use into the unincorporated county. The variety of use types envisioned within the campus setting more closely resembles that of a college campus and those found within retirement communities. Finally, similar to a retirement community, several housing types are anticipated as a part of this setting. From an infrastructure standpoint, public water with adequate fire flows will be a necessity. Due to the multiplicity of proposed uses, either public or non-traditional sewer will be required. Finally, as uses of this nature have relatively little traffic associated with them, little impact on the road system is expected. These amendments should strike the appropriate balance between the public and private interest. In light of that, staff recommends these amendments be forwarded to the county board of commissioners with a recommendation for their adoption.
Thank you, sir. Public hearing is open. Anyone wants to make a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dick Wells. I live at 337 Whitewater Way in Franklin. And I'm the chairman of board of Brightstone and happy to be here tonight. Very thankful that you're considering this. Especially want to thank Joe and the staff who have worked with us on this project. We have been a Williamson County organization for more than 10 years. We serve more than 35 adults with special needs. And our goal is to expand not only the number of people we serve, but the kinds of things that we can do. We would like to have a lifelong learning campus worthy of Williamson County. Your staff has made sure, by the way, if you've read the amendment, that it will be, but we wouldn't want to do it any other way. We have a roomful of families here tonight, and so to try to respect your time, we've asked two of those families to briefly come and make a few comments. And then we'll, of course, be, we'll be willing to answer any questions you have. And we really appreciate this opportunity to be here tonight and look forward to a favorable outcome. Herb Dwell, parent of one of our clients. And then Ann and Justin Ellerfolly are going to come up in just a minute and make a few comments. Thank you.
Hello, gentlemen. I'm Herb Dwell. I represent my wife Elaine and our daughter Barbara, who has been attending Brightstone since the very first day it was open. She was one of the, one of the first four that started with Brightstone. And every day, every week for the last over 10 years, Brightstone has been a joy to our daughter. And what a tremendous help in learning and training her and helping her to have a respect for herself. So many things happen to special needs individuals when they are given the chance to learn and to enjoy life as we enjoy. You know, we're talking about young people who have, who would like to have a future. And many times, there's no future. And we, Brightstone is a future for these individuals because of our wonderful director, our, our great board of directors, the wonderful teachers. We are well-equipped at the center where we now enjoy here in Franklin. But we have run out of room, and we won't be here forever. I'm 86, and another 10 years, I'm not sure I'll be here. And I would like to see something happen sooner than that. So if you, as a commission, can do the right thing by giving us whatever Brightstone needs in helping us develop our campus, our center, you just don't know how many people you're going to be blessing, because we are a family of need. And we need, we need the community's support, and we are committed that whatever, whatever is done is going to be something that the community will be proud of, the neighbors will be proud of, and it's going to be an excellent facility. And who knows where, how big it will go. The money's out there if we just can present it in the right way. So thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate the chance to say something. It's been a joy to be here.
I'm kind of nervous here.
I'm Ann, and this is Justin Ellerfolly. We moved into 1428 Adams Street when I was six years old, and I still live there to this day.
And I moved there as well. And I've been there since I was, I don't know, like...
It's okay, honey.
Five or six or seven.
It's okay. Justin is 32 years old.
No, not 32.
How old are you? Are you, you're not 33 yet.
Yes, I am.
You are?
Yeah. I'm 30. Get it right this time.
I'm sorry.
It may not be that important, Mary.
What is important is since the day that he was, he was born, I have worried about him and what's going to happen to him. Sorry. All the families in here are in the same shoes they were. And we just ask that, taking into consideration what we're asking for and what it will mean to these young adults and the families.
That's all right, Mom.
Sorry. I've had four surgeries on my knees in eight months, and I cry at a, at a toothpaste commercial. So I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry. You want to say something, Justin?
Well, if I may...
Go ahead, Justin.
I'm Justin Ellerfolly. What my mom said, I lived, I lived at, live at Franklin, Tennessee. And I'm 33 years old, and, and I, I need a place, I may move out someday. And my friends' parents are, one of my friends' parents are not going to be here forever. And, and I need a place to live one of these days. And, well...
And how do I feel about Ms. Hawk?
And I'm, it's, what?
I said, how do I feel about Ms. Hawk?
Well, I needed someone to take care of me when my mom is gone. Well, let's see. We're only here, here on this earth for a short period of time.
That's right. And your mom trusts Ms. Hawk to take care of you?
And my mom trusts Ms. Hawk to take care of me.
So...
So...
Thank you very much, Ann. Let's go, guys.
Anyone else? Mr. Chairman? Is that all your people?
That's all we had asked of you.
You did a good job summarizing. I congratulate you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else? We close the public hearing this time. Thank you. Comments? I'm going to repeat my question from prior agenda item. Mike, setbacks, that's usually our problem. Mike or Joe?
No. Setbacks are, we are, we are proposing a setback 100 feet from all property lines, and some of the other setbacks you see have to deal with side setbacks for structures.
And they are?
And 20 feet.
20?
No, 25 feet, I beg your pardon.
In what zoning district?
That would be, it would be allowed, we would propose this in the RP5, RD5. It's on page three. There's several districts that we have asked for consideration for this use.
Did you say 20 feet for a side yard?
25 feet between principals, principal buildings unless they're connected by a cover.
I'm talking about contiguous neighbors.
No, 100 feet.
Thank you. Pete?
Yes, I have had two questions. One is, I've been involved with a group home here in Franklin that deals with teenage boys in state custody. If they ever decided and had funds to go out and do something of this nature, would they also be able to come under guidelines of this nature also?
I think this one's fairly narrow, Mike. Would that be a proper interpretation?
Yes, it would be. This is, yes, it would be. It was crafted very narrowly, and I think part of the reason why it was crafted very narrowly is because, one, this is a rather unusual use. It's kind of a malum of about three uses we have in the zoning ordinance.
Answer your question, Pete?
No. The second part of that, though, is, you know, we, in the discussions that we've had with the Brightstone folks over time, I was very leery of trying to develop... we've had with the Brightstone folks over time, I was very leery of trying to develop a best fit. We had a pretty, pretty tempestuous public hearing a couple, a couple of Decembers ago when we did a best fit. And so, given the, given the rather unique nature of this proposal, I felt, you know, I felt like, and staff agreed, as they're wont to do at times, that this would be the best approach. So, that's why, that's why we're here tonight.
My, my second thing is this. I think there's nothing wrong with facilities, I see. Is security fencing around the side and the back of the property so that if one of the teenagers or something wanders off and falls in a neighbor's pond or creek or something, it would be deterred? I think security fencing should be required around the sides and backs.
What is the requirements at this point?
There is, there is no requirement for any type of security fencing.
Permission for approval and vote?
Second.
As is?
Um, yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Tommy? Thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman? That's with a recommendation.
Yes.
I'm just making sure you're sending it to the county commission with your recommendation that they adopt it.
That, as proposed by our staff. Yes.
That's correct. We good?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record the vote. Motion carries. Folks, I know you all love to stay with us. But I'm going to give you about three minutes to get out of here. Tonight, I'm 18. Concept plan review for Hart's Landmark containing 45 lots on 49.77 acres located off Heartland Road, the eighth voting district. Staff?
A sketch plan for a 27-lot conventional subdivision was reviewed by this body in April of 2007, and a preliminary plat for that development was subsequently approved. However, because the final plat was not submitted within the required timeframe, the preliminary plat approval expired. The applicant is now requesting concept plan approval for a conservation subdivision in the suburban infill and conservation zoning district. Approval of a concept plan, which was called a site plan under the previous zoning ordinance, is the first stage in the development approval process. The proposed development will occupy approximately 50 acres of the former development site and will utilize the roadbed and other infrastructure that was partially constructed pursuant to the previous development plan. The remaining acreage is not part of this proposed development, and the applicant has indicated a desire to create a large lot easement subdivision on this land at a future time. That large lot easement subdivision will require separate approval by this body. The proposed conservation subdivision consists of 46 lots ranging from approximately a quarter of an acre to just over a half acre in size. This results in a gross density of approximately .9 dwelling units per acre. Approximately 55% of the proposed development site will be set aside as permanent open space, and the site's most sensitive environmental features, which consist of very steep slopes, slippage soils, and woodlands, will be contained within the open space. Access to the development will be provided via connection to and the continuation of Heartland Road, which is located within the Farmington subdivision and which currently stubs to the property in question. All roads within the development will be publicly maintained. A traffic access analysis, which was prepared by the applicant, indicates that Heartland Drive and Farmington Drive will continue to operate at acceptable levels of service with the added vehicle trips generated by the proposed development. The county's traffic consultant has reviewed this report and has concurred with these findings. Roadway C is proposed to stub at the property line to serve as a connection to the adjoining property to the east, should it be developed in the future. Water service will be provided by the city of Franklin, and sanitary sewer will be provided by Berry's Chapel Utility, Inc. A number of items must be addressed with future submittals. The preliminary plat must address the following. One, identification of lots requiring engineered site plans per Article 13 of the zoning ordinance. Two, submission of roads, drainage, and erosion control plans for review and approval by the county engineer. And three, submission of water and sewer plans for review and approval by the city of Franklin and Berry's Chapel Utility, respectively. The final plat must address the following. One, prior to consideration, the applicant shall submit HOA documents for review and approval by the county attorney's office. The approved HOA documents must be recorded prior to the recording of the final plat. Two, establishment of a performance bond for roads, drainage, and erosion control. Three, establishment of performance bonds for water and sewer improvements as specified by the city of Franklin and Berry's Chapel Utility, respectively. Four, establishment of a performance bond for landscaping improvements. Five, execution of a stormwater maintenance agreement and submission of an operation and maintenance plan for stormwater improvements. And six, submission of the approved final plat in DWG format on recordable media based on the Tennessee State Plan Coordinate System prior to signature and recording of the plat.
Thanks, Mike. Is applicant here? You might want to join us for a little conversation. Any questions, staff? Comments? Anything you want to say, sir?
No, sir. My name is John Haas. I'm a principal with Edge Planning Landscape Architecture Urban Design, representing Tennessee contractors. If there's anything I want to say, we really appreciate working with staff over the last several months. This is part of the new zoning ordinance, and we've been working through it with each other, and we really appreciate it. Other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions I can.
Thank you. Stand by, and let's see. Jack?
Yeah, this is phase one. Is there a timeline on phase two?
Well, in regards to the phase lines, we were required to submit that as part of the information. We've actually had some conversations, actually, my client's been in conversations with the adjacent property owner for several years now. We've had recent conversations. We're actually going to move that phase line to include that roadway connection. And really, where those phase lines, my understanding is, in talking with Mr. Madison, those phase lines become a little more real when we go to preliminary plat, so when we make our new submittal.
And, and that's where I was going with this, this roadway connection, which has been in discussion for years.
Yes.
But that will be in phase one?
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, what roadway connection we talking about?
I won't get it right, but back, back when the first development...
Can you get it right? Yes, I think it's labeled as Road C.
Never mind, Jack.
I, I think it's labeled as Road C on the concept plan. It's the roadway that connects into the McKay's property. The third...
It's currently a proposal to stub out?
Yes.
Good, okay. Thank you. Other questions? Questions of the applicant? Questions of staff? This may be our first on our new ordinance, I guess, then, huh?
I think so.
You get a blue ribbon for that.
Well, we, we really do appreciate staff working with us.
Thank you. Any other comments, guys, girls? Your motion? Most maiden seconded. Any further discussion? Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 19, non-residential site plan. Site plan review for the retreat at Big East Fork Rural Retreat Extensive on 184.02 acres located at 5375 Big East Fork Road in the first voting district. Staff?
The applicant is requesting approval of a small retreat and events center on a roughly 180-acre parcel on Big East Fork Road, approximately three-quarters of a mile west of the Natchez Trace Parkway. This use is classified as a rural retreat extensive use and requires site plan approval by this body at a public meeting. As you might recall, the planning commission approved a site plan in 2010 for a day camp on this property. However, the day camp was never operated pursuant to that approval, and the property has since been sold. The site is heavily wooded with generally rugged topography, and approximately six-acre lake and a number of drainage ways also exist on the property. Surrounding parcels are generally large, ranging in size from 16 acres to more than 200 acres. According to the applicant's letter of intent, the existing lodge, which was formerly used as a residence for the previous property owner, will be utilized for events and will include one room to serve as lodging for a caretaker. Recreational amenities available to guests include the lake and several hiking trails. Access is to be provided from an existing driveway on Big East Fork Road. The county's highway department has visited the site and has concluded that site distance is sufficient at the driveway location. Public water is not available to this parcel, and the applicant has indicated that filtered lake water will be used as a source of potable water. The Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation has indicated that the water source will not be considered a public water system by the state if it does not serve 25 or more, or more individuals at least 60 days per year. The applicant has indicated that the facility will not meet this threshold, in which case the water system will not be regulated by TDEC. The Department of Sewer Disposal Management is still reviewing the request, and approval is expected by meeting date. The proposed site plan has been found to comply with all applicable provisions of the county's zoning ordinance, including the specific standards for rural retreat extensive uses. Any future additional structures or expansion of the use beyond what is shown on this site plan would require approval of a revised site plan. Given approval by the Department of Sewer Disposal Management by meeting date, staff recommends approval of this request subject to the following stipulations. Completion of an affidavit of compliance to ensure continued adherence to Section 11.03D5 of the Williamson County zoning ordinance and the approved site plan, and that the property is subject to periodic inspection to ensure compliance with the terms of approval. And the use may not serve 25 or more individuals 60 or more days per year, per the Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. One additional item, the Department of Sewer Disposal Management has approved the request.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Is this the one that was in here before I was going to drink out of the lake? Is that, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thought I'd seen this before. You, sir?
Mr. Chairman, Jeff King with Stuyson Harbison, representing the applicant on this.
Thank you.
And the applicant is in agreement with all the conditions of the planning staff.
Thank you, sir. Any questions of staff or Mr. King?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
My question is also about the lake water. Since the water system will not be regulated by TDEC, I'm a, I, maybe I just need educating. Filtered lake water, I mean, is this, people be swimming in it? And, I mean, is there going to be some sort of a purification system and, or testing or something to make sure that the, that the water supply is safe for drinking?
Two responses. First, the applicant has taken samples of the water to a certified laboratory and had the water tested. Secondly, for events, his plan is to bring bottled water in. So if someone's having a retreat or a meeting there, then he's going to have bottled water available to be served.
So they won't be drinking the lake water? It's just for use and...
I don't think that's planned, but the, there is an existing residence there, and the water, you know, was formerly used by the occupants of that residence. So if you drank out of the tap, you would be drinking filtered lake water. But I can, the plan is to furnish bottled water for guests of the retreat.
Thank you.
It's not treated at all?
No, yes, sir, it is treated.
Is it chlorinated?
I don't know that detail, but I do know that it's been tested by a lab and found to be fine, potable.
Not chlorinated's why it kills you. Take my word for it. Your, your concerns are good, yeah. I can't, I didn't know that the TDEC had a regulation that if you didn't serve more than 25 people, you didn't have to check it. I guess if you don't kill many, it's okay. I mean, that's kind of the way that reads. I mean, I'm, I'm being facetious certainly, but that's, when you think about it. Don?
Was this not the one that was a, and I'm not finding on the plat here, there was a problem at the entrance with trees that had to be removed, and there was a question about the trees for, for site distance? I'm trying to remember from the last time it was before us.
Apparently not. Highway department said it was okay.
Highway department says it's fine. It has checked site distance on it.
What I heard. I, I don't recall that, mister.
I take it the trees are probably gone.
That may be why it's fine.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, if there's any further concern about the water, I reaffirm my memory that the letter of intent that has been submitted with the application states water source bottled water. Main facility is served by filtered water from lakes. So the applicant, again, is intending and has agreed by its letter of intent to, you know, to serve bottled water and is in agreement to that being a condition of the approval.
This is in the letter of intent?
Yes, sir.
Staff?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. That helps. Thank you. Any other questions? Comments? Your second? Thank you, ma'am. We have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 20, under other variance requests for off-site septic easement on Hillsborough Valley, for Hillsborough Valley addition, Lot 3, containing one lot on 3.65 acres located at 2216 Hillsborough Valley Road in the eighth voting district. Staff?
As you may recall, this item was reviewed at the March 2013 meeting as a final plat and variance request, but was deferred due to the applicant not being available to answer questions. At this time, the applicant is requesting approval of the variance request only, as staff concluded that the plat is a minor revision under the requirements of the subdivision regulations, which does not require planning commission review. This subdivision was recorded in 1965, and a dwelling was constructed on the, on the subject lot in 1977. A review of our records indicates that the septic system serving this lot has been subject to a series of chronic malfunctions dating from shortly after its initial installation. In conjunction with the prospective sale of this property, the applicant is seeking to install an entirely new system, which includes new primary and secondary soils areas. Due to soil limitations, the secondary area has been proposed for the adjacent parcel and not, and on an easement. As a result of this request, this body must consider this as a variance per Section 5.6.1D of the subdivision regulations. In general, the utilization of off-site septic easements is not considered desirable, particularly for newly created lots. However, given the age of both the lot and house, and the documented history of less than satisfactory septic system performance, staff views this as a viable solution. The applicant has pursued purchasing the property on which the secondary soils areas shall be locate, will be located, but a purchase agreement could not be reached. As a result, this proposed easement is the applicant's only solution to the septic system malfunctions, and it's considered by the Department of Sewer Disposal Management to be a necessity for the protection of public health and the environment. Accordingly, staff recommends approval... Accordingly, staff recommends approval of this variance request. The off-site septic easement shall be recorded and noted on the plat prior to the recording of the plat.
Thank you, sir. Questions of staff? Applicant here? You wish to make comments, sir?
No, I think it was explained well. I'll be glad to answer any questions. I'm next, Seaver King. I've built a house and I've lived in, on that lot since 1977.
Stand by, I will. See if there's any questions. Comments? Excuse me, are questions of staff? The back, the one off-site that's on an easement is the backup system?
Yes.
So there won't be anything there unless there's a figure up front?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Comments? Don?
Was it going to be, and they didn't want to sell the land? Are these are the people that are, that are giving you an easement that-
Yes, sir, that, that's correct.
What is the length of the, the timeframe? Is there any timeframe on it?
No, there's no time limit on it.
Do we have a copy of the easement?
Yes, I have it here.
I don't need it, just as long as we got it. Counselor, you seen it? You're fine? Good. Anything else? Most maiden, seconded. Any further discussion? Prepare to vote. Vote now. Record the vote. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other business, guys, girls? Motion to adjourn? I hadn't heard one yet. We're out of here. Thank you.